Hello, Chris Sanders from Community All United TV. Coming to a city near you in Newark right now. Have Comcast Cable, Channel 190 and 1097 every Thursday from 8 to 8:30. That's Community All United TV Comcast Cable. Every 8 to 8:30 on Thursday on Channel 1097 and 190. We are here with the councilman, John Sharp James Jr.
No Junior.
No Junior. Okay, John Sharp James.
Yes, alright. Glad to be here, Chris.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm gonna let him tell a little bit about himself. I want to bring us from the legacy up till now. If he can give us a quick rundown on that, and then I have a couple of questions.
Okay, well, um, born and raised in Newark. Uh, my father was former Mayor Sharp James. He held South Ward Councilman position. 1970, I gotta think, to go so far back. I was two years old, and I just remember growing up. Uh, it was more community orientated back then. End of this or beginning or middle of the civil rights, uh, time. And, you know, everyone was together, neighbors were together, families were together. Uh, we all won our equal rights, you know. The rebellion was in, uh, 69 in Newark. You know, that rebellion riot, I think was more of a rebellion because these people wanted equal rights. Uh, so that affected, you know, our upbringing. And, uh, it just slowly but surely, um, campaign after campaign eventually became mayor. Uh, I went to St. Benedict's High School, uh, you know. You meet so many people, you're doing a campaign, you're licking stamps, you're going door to door. You know, you put leaflets out, uh, just a process. But overall, you know, wanting to do the right thing for the right reasons. Uh, my first job, I think it was junior year of high school, St. Benedict's, was at Burbank, which used to be a market and university. First chance, you know, and responsibility, uh, really good. Did that for like two years. And then went on to Morehouse College down in Atlanta, Hot Land as they call it. Did that, and believe it or not, within six months, I joined the New Jersey, um, actually, the United States Army Reserves, uh, while I was a student in college. Still continue college, uh, majoring in English. My junior year, I joined ROTC, uh, completed college with an English major. Uh, got caught off the Desert Storm, did not have to go overseas, but spent six months down active duty in Georgia as a private. And, uh, you know, I slowly but surely worked my way through the education system, uh, the military system, came back home from Desert Storm from Georgia. Uh, went to Rutgers Law School from 92 to 95. Uh, and started work for the county around 98. And right now, I'm the Emergency Operations Director at the County Psych Hospital up in Cedar Grove. And I've been lucky and honored to have been first elected councilman at large citywide in 2013, and then ran for South Ward Councilman in 2014. So it's an honor and privilege to serve the community. Doing basically what I was doing when my father was mayor, helping people, uh, running positive campaigns. It's just about, you know, bringing resources out to the community. COVID has been a challenge for all of us. At the same time, we have embraced more technology, we can't meet in person, but we have to have, uh, shows like this, a lot more on the internet. I have Zoom community meetings, you know, and get our communication information passed out, you know, that way instead of a group setting. So it's been kind of different, but, uh, I think we're gonna make it through in Newark.
Yeah, I heard your father was basically the catalyst for all of the, of the big things that have happened in Newark. Like for NJ PAC and, and what was it, Prudential, a lot of stuff with Prudential. And I mean, so you were there when, when all these deals were going?
Well, it was more and more of a fight, not a deal, because I, I think the state didn't want a lot of things in Newark. Uh, at back in the times, uh, because I know it took seven years to get to, uh, New Jersey PAC built. It was not easy. It was not an easy push, uh, and it took additional seven years to get the Prudential Center, uh, built. So these are major projects, but in between that time, you know, to focus more on the community. Uh, you know, you don't get elected based on two big projects, uh, over a 14-year period. Uh, you know, and just empowering those in the Newark community, uh, to bring our city from, uh, say, bright to bright. And so, uh, you know, Newark got more respected, uh, we, uh, changed the police force around. At one point, we had 1,700 officers. Uh, not that more officers is necessarily answered, but, uh, you know, we had more minorities on the force, more folks that lived, or Newark residents on the force than prior decades. And, uh, but slowly but surely, uh, you know, we were improving.
Right, right. So now, as far as the, the South Ward is concerned, are there any big plans that are coming on to, you know, the South Ward to, to bring a lot of new jobs and, and new growth? What is, what, what does the South Ward want?
Well, primarily, the South Ward knows residential, so it's not like downtown. So we don't have big plots of land to do big projects or big programs. With their number of, uh, like multi-unit, uh, apartment buildings coming. Uh, if you go three blocks in any direction, you'll see a home either coming from the ground up or, or some has been remodeled or renovated or being gutted. So there's a lot of small growth, and that's the key. At the same time, you know, we can't forget about the people who live there and have lived there for decades and generations. Uh, so we have other small community organizations, uh, going around. We have the street team, uh, which goes to corners and tries to engage the youth, get them back in the system. We have a clergy, you know, alliance goes around, and they have, we've given them some old police cars, you know, to be involved in community activities. Uh, just a lot of things going on, a lot of nonprofits. IYO is in the South Ward, uh, you know, everyone's trying to do their little piece. There's no one big gimmick plan or project, we just want positive growth.
Sure, sure. Now, if we go up, I'm a part of the IYO, and we're trying to develop that, that building, the community center. It's been there for 50 years, doing a lot of good things. We're thinking about going up like three, three or four floors up. Is there, is there a height restriction in there? I don't know if that, I don't think.
Three should be okay, because you've got some three families over the area. You know, I have to look at the zoning exactly. I mean, the key is gonna come down to funding. I mean, uh, you know, the climate and the federal government doing, especially during the Trump, uh, Republican administration is, you know. I feel like the cities are getting too much already, they want to cut social programs. So, uh, that's been one of the biggest problems. They got a lot of nonprofits, but they're all barely surviving, and, you know, struggling, and it's no accident.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that program, the, the mural program was really good in the South Ward.
Well, it's, it's, it's beautiful, it's artistic, but again, you know, folks see real jobs, uh, folks, we have local control backing the education system, so that our kids can, you know, challenge those from other countries now because it's a worldwide job market. I mean, it's not limited to who live in a city limit or certain zip code. You know, you compete with people, uh, immigrants or what have you, uh, they come from other communities, different zip codes. Uh, they may not look like you, but hey, they may have the degrees or the, uh, education to support whatever industry they're gonna apply for.
Sure, it's hard to, to make it, the majority of the, starting off at home, basically, as far as finding workers that are from lo, you know, local areas. When these guys come in, they have to have a certain amount of local workers, right?
Yes, so it's a 51% on projects. Uh, we do have a workforce development, uh, organization where, you know, individuals can come, leave their resume, be put in a pool. So anybody coming with, needing employee, employees can say, hey, well, we need someone for history, or we need someone for construction, we need someone for math, mathematics, because it's not just individuals who maybe didn't finish school. We have people that have been downsized or laid off by the workforce, it might be professors, might have PhDs. So everyone looking for a job is not, you know, ignorant. Everyone's not looking for necessarily an entry-level job. We have educated individuals living in the city, uh, they might have retired, you know, or again, might have been laid off or their company went out of business. They're looking for employment also.
Sure, and it's not, when, now we see Paramount Assets, they own this building, the next one next door, all in downtown area, and they're, they're buying up a lot of stuff. What, what do you, I mean, what do you feel about that as far as the big developers that are coming in, so they're buying so many things?
Well, I mean, you can't stop them, I mean, you know, we, as long as they comply with our affirmative action, you know, they hire 51% Newarkers. There are fines if they do not comply, where we can stop the project. But we try and work with them and say, hey, you can't find workers, here's a resource, here's this pool where you can find workers. So, I mean, you're not gonna stop the movement.
Right, now, where, where do you see the, the city's going in just the right direction, the way that you would like it to go? You, you like Mayor Ross's vision for the city?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I think he's, he's touched on every major issue. Completing the lead lines was major, to say, look, let's just replace them. I'm gonna find the money, I'm a partner with the county, and we're gonna get all this done. Yes, we're gonna have a little increased debt, but that'll be rectified. He's hired as many police as possible, you know, under the circumstances. He's compassionate, uh, we're not ticketing and towing people as much as we used to during the pandemic, because as you know, many DMV, uh, locations have been closed because they got dealt with COVID, some of their workers. Every day, even, I believe right now, as we speak, he's doing his, his daily five, uh, PM, fi, uh, Facebook Live. Uh, giving more people information because with the pandemic, which no one knew, talked or knew about or could predict three years ago, there's a lot of new information coming out every day. So we make sure in my office that we put that on our webpage, you know, because every day, there's new information. Something could have happened this morning or this afternoon, uh, before his broadcast, and even after his broadcast, that we try and make sure people get that information, which may affect them, you know. Right now, people are asking, uh, where do we go for the vaccine? Johnson, Johnson vaccine just had some side effects, and that's stalled at this point. So if it's not John Johnson, where do we go? Uh, so, you know, he and the Health Department have been taking the lead as they should during this pandemic to make sure the entire city is covered, and as much information to give out as possible to alleviate fears.
Yeah, I heard that the, the lead lines was a really big project that, you know, they basically found a lot of funding from, from the government instead of having to raise taxes.
Well, the taxes are all gonna go up. What we did was, we partnered with the county, and the county allowed us, you know, to bond some of it out so that, you know, we, we wouldn't have to hit everyone now, and we could get all of them done. Instead of, you know, phase one, phase two. I think the first funding came from the state, you know, that was limited funding. But with the county, I think that covered all the rest of base. And my house is gonna be done, I think in the next couple of weeks, so they're on our block now. But, uh, it's, it's just a win-win.
So what, what, what's the percentage of completion of, of the houses now?
I'd say over 80.
Over 80%?
I mean, I throw a ballpark out there, over 80. You know, I think there were eight, the 8,000 start with or some have you, so. Remember, and we also had to replace, and we did other municipalities, we have folks in Belleville and Nutley that, that had lines from our, uh, from our water system. And, and we, we changed those too, so we didn't cheat, we were fair. If you got water from Newark and you had a lead service line, we replaced it.
Right, right, and it's, it's a.
It's complete solution.
Sure, sure, sure. Now, with the, with the, um, educational system, what's, where's that, where's that headed?
Well, we fought to get it back on the local control, which, you know, the mayor, former principal led that. Uh, now that we have, unfortunately, between the times, we fought for local control, uh, and it was run by the state. The charter school movement is now, you know, bombarded, so they took over many of the schools, uh, that used to be formerly traditional schools. As councilman, I represent all the children, whether they attend charter or traditional, and I just want equality. Now, I just noticed some of the charters have resources that the traditional schools don't have. And charter schools, uh, don't seat all of the students because they don't have the space. So even if every traditional school parent wanted to sit in their school to charter school, so they're the highest ticket out, they can't, their capacity, and, and that's a problem because they're leaving behind sometimes students who have individual learning plans and, uh, uh, those with, uh, second English as a second language, or those who are disabled or have some kind of disability because they don't have, uh, the resources there to really tackle that, you know. The best students, of course, maybe some mediocre students, of course, but some of the more at risk or in need or still being taught in the traditional school system, and they need those resources. So it's not a, I, I don't think it's a fair comparison.
What are they gonna do? I mean, what's the solution to that?
Well, I mean, charter schools are here to stay. Uh, we need to push for more funding for traditional schools, uh, do the best that we have, try to have the best personnel, staff in place. I toured, uh, all three high schools that we have in the South Ward, uh, um, with the mayor and the superintendent, uh, two weeks ago. And we wanted to make sure they were ready for in-person class again. Uh, you know, they've been doing remote learning for all this time because of COVID. Thirty-three percent of the parents opted to send their children back. So they showed us they had segmented classrooms, uh, they had, uh, we call like partitions up on these desks, uh, how they come into school, how they're gonna be checked, you know, for, uh, for possibly being COVID in, the temperature, uh, ask questions, and a pad for their feet. Uh, and, you know, how, um, not every class was coming in the first door. And the high schools are gonna have two entrances, so let's say, uh, ninth, uh, uh, 10th and 11th, 11th and 12th grade will go, uh, in one entrance. The ninth and the 10th grade will come in another entrance, and they never interact during the day. So if someone pops hot in one of those groups, they're still isolated, and they're gonna come in and get a snack, they're gonna eat at their desk, and when they go out the door at 12, class from 8 to 12, they're gonna get a bagged lunch, and then they can eat at home, so they're not missing any meals. Uh, no one's eating in cafeterias or in group settings yet, but it would look like an excellent plan. And if someone does pop hot, uh, maybe high temperature or some other symptom, there was a room right off to the side where the nurse would go to, where they could be separated and, and further actions would be taken.
Right, right, right. Now, where, where are COVID locations as far as getting the, um, tests?
You should go to, uh, well, NJIT, they open that as a major station for, for, for the city of Newark. Uh, if you have a senior who might be, you know, stuck in a house, can't get out, not mobile, call the Health Department, uh, they will send someone to the house. Uh, I don't know how often they're doing it, but I know I've done it on at least five or six occasions. But some seniors just can't make it to a different location. Uh, we've been working with the housing authority, and they're gonna try and do their buildings in place. Uh, so the seniors, especially elderly over in Crechmere, what have you, Dayton area, don't have to go in mass, they can go and do them in their buildings. Uh, it just, just makes sense. So we're trying to, a, a bunch of different organization, agencies, trying to do the right thing and, and get as much vaccine out as possible.
So what, what's the reentry programs in this, this stuff? Where you were saying something about one of the nonprofits that's been here for a while, was it the Grebe's?
Yes, so you have New Jersey Reentry Program, uh, they have, I believe, seven other locations statewide, one in Jersey City, a couple of South Jersey. Uh, so they just opened one in Newark, I wanna say about six months ago. And, uh, it is what it says, reentry. Uh, individuals who have had, you know, felony, what have you, uh, they've done all their time, they maxed out or what have you, they're released back into population. Uh, they may not have driver's license, they may not have IDs. Uh, this is, they, you know, try to help them get on their feet. And it depends on the individual, but just this kind of programming. Uh, but it's to let them know, uh, they're not alone, and they still have to report to parole officers or what have you, something to that effect, you know, but here's an agency for you. You know, let us know before you do some other crime again. Use our resources to the best of our ability.
Got it, got it. I think the Career One Stop is trying to locate in the, um, IYO building.
I mean, that, that'd be possible, I mean, hopefully, I mean, she needs, she has a huge facility, so she could use as much help as she gets, can get, and I wouldn't have a problem with that. But, uh, but at one time, they were discussing possibly the reentry program in our building, and that just doesn't make, she can't have them by law around kids. So that was a problem with that, because her facility was definitely thought of as far as co-location.
Got it, got it. Where's the latest with SS County College? I know at one point, they, they were, um, you know, on shaky ground because of, I don't know, but some of the administrative things that was going on, they found it was, you know, it was some funds being.
I don't know. I don't wanna go down that road.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, I, I think SS County College is a staple in this area, and I know, yeah. So, I, I mean, what's the relationship with this, with the city in SS County College?
Well, I mean, you know, I, my father was a professor there for a long time, but, uh, I mean, they're one of our higher learning institutions, just like NJIT, uh, Rutgers. I mean, we want to promote education, so those individuals from high schools who want to continue in the higher education, college. I mean, you know, uh, SS County College is an excellent college for a two-year degree.
Right, and anybody that, students in, in the city in Newark, they can go there for, for free, is it free?
I believe they have been, been pushing for that, I don't know whether that's 100%, but that's the ultimate goal.
Sure, sure. Last item that I was thinking about was, was the, the homeless situation. Is there a, a plan around the homeless?
Well, well, we're gonna build a shelter, but for, what I'll tell you is, our temporary shelter we had on Sussex Avenue, uh, we found out that there were individuals that weren't from Newark there. Uh, we had found individuals that were working that were staying there. Now, the vendor, of course, doesn't care because they're charging us by the person, new person at door, no money for us to fill in whatever beds it may be. But we found a couple of college students in there, like, hey, you guys aren't supposed to be staying here for free, you know, we're supposed to. Uh, and, and then we had a major problem when we found out that other towns were dropping their homeless off in New York or bringing them to Sussex. We found a major problem, other towns are giving them one-way tickets to Penn Station.
Sure.
Unfair, so sometimes you build it, they'll come, you build it, they'll send it. Uh, but we scoured the records, and that's how we knew some people shouldn't have been in that shelter, and we rectified it, you know.
Yeah, and so I think there were people that were buying, uh, rents for like at least six months, and then they would stop, and then the homeless.
That's a different program, so, so that's the SODA program. Uh, that, that was a special one-time assistance for Newark, New York residents. Uh, it's, it's cheaper for them to pay rent in New Jersey than have them, you know, pay rent in, in New York. And you don't even have them stay in hotels over in New York. So, like you said, they were paying landlords upfront, a one-year rent for this tenant. But when the one year was up, you were stuck with it. And, and, and special one-time assistance, and they weren't following up. And the problem on the front end with that is, they were not truly checking the living conditions of the tenants that they were to propose locations, where they were bringing the tenants to, to some landlords, putting them in inhabited conditions. Heat didn't work, electric didn't work, just horrible living condition. They didn't know any better, they just knew it was moving somewhere. And so, uh, the mayor, uh, we were inundated with complaints. Uh, the mayor contacted the mayor in New York and said, you know, you, you have to stop this. You know, you're, you're dumping these people on New Jersey, uh, in Newark, Irvington, and other municipalities. You don't really know where they're staying because you're not checking. And then after a year or six months or what have you, you know, you've, you've washed your hands of them. And, and now the city's like, stuck with them. And they don't necessarily go homeless, but now it's, it's a rent problem. You know, so, but that was the SODA program. And the ci, and New York City agreed to stop the program and stopped it immediately.
Oh, good, good. And the veterans, I, I mean, we were trying to do a project in the Ironbound, of course, they denied it. They pushed the, pushed that project down. What, what is it like as far as finding locations for veterans in, in, in the different wards? I mean, as far as the South Ward, are people trying to bring veteran housing to, to the South Ward? Or what does it look, I mean, how do they frown on that?
Well, the most successful program is Happy Athletic Manly.
Yes.
They've housed some veterans, but you know, that's a sweat equity program where, you know, anyone who's, who's down and out, who wants to have a home, works through their building, other homes. And at a certain point, after they counseled you on your credit, counseled you on homeownership, made sure you have steady employment, you've worked enough sweat equity and are prepared to own a home. And then, you know, they build your house, and you actually helped finish up building your house. So they've been doing that, uh, and the NFL was involved with that, the commissioner. And, uh, there was one player, Warren, I'm trying to think of his last name, I'll pull up later. Uh, but that's been one of the most successful programs. Uh, we do have the Regional Veteran Center downtown, and, um, specifically, the VA has been doing a lot of things on their own. So we have the American Legion, 212 Elizabeth Avenue, they had a fire, they're trying to rebuild. So I'm trying to think, there's a couple of smaller groups, but the VA tries to do everything in-house to the best of its ability, a lot of stuff is private. I'm a veteran, I'm a councilman, and I've asked them, you know, well, we want to look for veterans for hiring, for jobs. Can you, you know, give the information so that we can get it to them, so they can apply? And like, you know, they kind of don't want to do that because it's privacy, give contact information and addresses. Uh, so, you know, those are areas we need to look for more serving veterans because we do have a large population in the city of Newark, uh, who served in, you know, multiple wars. And, and, and they've sacrificed, they risked their lives in this country. They deserve the same respect. Uh, I forget nationwide, homeless veterans, but some statistics says it's like 25% of the homeless are veterans. It should be that way.
So when, when it's affordable housing project, I know it's like, most times if it's a 50-unit development, 20% is supposed to be affordable housing, and sometimes a percent of that will go to veterans or.
No, that's just, that's open for anyone. It's not limited to veterans.
Got it, got it, got it. So I'm, I mean, if you want to discuss any other topics, I'm, I've asked all of my. I know, I know the only other question that I have to deal with as far as being part of Wisdom Chased Minds is these, these young folks and making sure, you know, they're protected and that they have programming. And that's, that's, that's one of my main missions, is to try to make sure that young folks know how you got to where you got. And, you know, I know it's a lot of struggle and perseverance, even though you had a legacy. You're similar to me, I, I have my father that left a legacy for me. I mean, how much of the pathway, was it a lot easier because you had a, a, a mentor that was the mayor?
I'd say no, because he was not the mayor until I was 17. He was not the mayor, you know, he was a councilman, but he was out doing his council stuff. So, you know, there was a fight on the block, I mean, I had to deal with it, you know. I mean, I had no bigger brother than was me, you know, so I'm glad I grew up in the community. I mean, I was shot when I was like 17, so I saw a bullet in my leg from same block my mother and father live on now, you know. So it could happen to anyone, there were no safe zones, you know, bullets don't have a name on them. Unfortunately, you know, rolling up, I mean, we did have fights. I, a teenager, people started doing knife stuff, but the amount of guns we have on the street now is just. I don't know, I, I don't think there's any city like Newark, if you're born and raised here. You know, I sort of feel fully vested here, I wouldn't be comfortable living anywhere else. You know, because they don't know you, they don't care about you, you know. And I can have, I mean, you and I have known each other forever through our fathers, through business, it's just, it, it's natural, you know. It's not trying to wedge a, a, a ball into a square hole.
Absolutely, I really honor you and your time. So, I, of course, you got my support whenever you're running for anything. Yes, definitely, so please, thank you for your time, and, uh, am I leaving anything out, you think? Well, Community All United TV, another successful interview with a lot of information and education. We're always trying to bring this to, to the community. And with your, your sponsorships and your, your support, we can keep on expanding and doing bigger things in the city. And we, right, we're gonna be, uh, trying to get at least 10 to 20 young people and, and take them to Africa in 2022. So it's, it's a, it's a really good effort and things that we, and these are all young folks from, from Newark. So I wanted to specify that. And I want to thank you guys again, and it's, uh, Comcast Cable and Xfinity on 1097 and 190 on Thursdays from 8 to 8:30. Thanks for tuning in, over and out.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.